Make the call to order Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, February 4th, 2013 to 7:30. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as we are now. Adoption of agenda.
I'd like to remove H from tonight's agenda as we have been, we have received new information on that.
I'm sorry, you said leach. Any other additions or deletions?
Should we put in there policy manual workshop? Reschedule. And then replace H with that?
Any comments? The other additions?
To make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of H Township Office Portal heater purchase request, replacing him with policy manual workshop.
Support. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carried. Public comments. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for record.
My name's Robert Airsmid. I live at 596 500 New Haven Road, Lennox Township issue. I've made many a complaint about the multiple acres of junk that I live next to. I don't live next to the landfill, but it looks like I do. There's acres and acres and acres of blue tards, black tards, trailers, campers, all kinds of junk to the equipment. I'm sure most of you guys have been asked to come out to the property that is next to me and see it. Would you all live next to that? And how long would you live next to it before you get sick and put it up? Mr. Tronley has supported trying to get that cleaned up without any help from anybody else. It's been brought to the board many, 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 many times. And the best thing he could do at the time is in, in force supervision responsibilities. I'm asking the board to help change what I live next to because I know you wouldn't live next to it. You have ordinances against blight, you have ordinances against land use, you can't have companies coming in there dumping their waste and just get away with it. It's, it's ordinance as a residential area, not a business.
Could you pull the mic up, sir? I'm sorry.
Not a junk carer, and it wasn't like that when I moved into Lennox Township. I'd like to ask for the board to help me stop living like this continuously. I've done many, many, many complaints. Many of you see me down here in Township pleading my case. You have a file of multiple complaints from multiple people, not just myself. Most of you were on the same board when Gardner was in office, and you know my complaints went all the way back then. So again, I ask for your assistance in this, putting some type of ordinance, some type of rule, some type of blight ordinance, some type of land use, so that I don't have to live next to this. I'm a resident of Lennox Township too, and I should have some rights. What the courts can't do, I'm asking you guys to help, or get the courts to help, or write an ordinance that gets this to stop. I don't need to watch Rizzo come in there and dump their waste, I don't need to watch some company in 5 mile road Detroit come in there and dump their waste, I don't need to watch North Corral Landscaping come in there and dump their waste, and that's only the ones that I see. Is there anything this township can do to stop that? There's two people that live there, not just one. I appreciate any support I can give from the board. And again, thank you, Mr. Tronley, for enforcing the executive privileges to do what's supposed to be right for a supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Yes, sir. Name and address, please, sir.
My name's Alan Asco. I live at 57800 Frost Road. I don't know if I'm early or late, but I understand that our past city council representative, attorney, whatever you want to call them, is gone. I don't know if you've replaced one yet or not. I want to voice my opinion. I've been a businessman for 40 years, and I'm really concerned that we hire within our county. When we go to court, 99% of the time it's McComb County Court. It works. We have to have, in my estimation, 40 years of business, you have to have an attorney that resides in the county. If, and tell me, if you've already hired an attorney, then I'm wasting my time. But if you have not hired an attorney, I strongly, strongly hope to find somebody within our county. I know we have qualified people. You people have lived in the county all this, most of your lives too. And there are just no reason for you to spend my money out of this county. I want my money spent here. The attorneys, there's, there's attorneys in this county that are as good as they come. I don't care who you hire, but I feel that our money should be spent at home. You'll get your best bang for your buck. When they go to court, they know everybody there, they don't have to travel long distances. And I've been involved in several lawsuits in my time, and am involved in one right now. And, and I just don't think it's fair to our taxpaying attorneys not to have a shot at this job. Now, I don't know, have you, have you already got somebody or no?
No, sir. Right now, we're out waiting for, it's, our OPs are out, and I believe the deadline is the 6th at 4:00, or 4:30 on the 6th is the deadline.
I just hope, that's what I'm asking, and I certainly would believe that, that everybody else, every other taxpayer sitting here would, would agree with me. If there's somebody that don't agree with me, please explain it to me, because in 40 years of business, I found wherever I had a problem, I better hire an attorney from that county. That's, that's my opinion, folks.
Thank you, sir. Any more public comments this time? Approval of minutes, 1:713. Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Atchaker. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Mid-mom business. Be it, I'm showing you. Two mid-mom business. One is for the fire chief for an extra night, a hotel for firework inspection seminar. And the other one is request to advertise in the voice for positions available in Lennox Township offices. Any questions? Sheriff's report. He still come up behind on that? I'll talk to him, see if they can get more caught up. Fire department report, Luke Denny's out of town. Is there anybody here on his behalf? If there's no questions, I'm going to go right through with that. EMS report.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, honored members of the board. Tonight, we come before you, as we do about once a year at this time, to swear in the newest hires at the emergency medical service. I'll share with you a little bit that tonight is really important not only to the EMS, but to these young people. Of the number of people that we extend job offers to throughout the year at the EMS, due to our really very high standards, only about half of the people that we extend job offers to ever make it to tonight, which is the night that they actually receive their badges and are sworn in. We take pretty seriously our obligation to this community, not only because we respect so much all of you and the taxpayers who funded the EMS, but in fact, our families live here. Our, our children drive to these communities, our parents and, and our, our parents and our spouses live here in this community. And so, there's really no, I don't think higher bar that we can set than knowing the people that we give these badges to tonight might be called to care for any one of them at any given time. So with that, the, I'd like to call forward this evening, the three young men who will receive their badges. The gentleman, if you want to join me? This is Garrett Smith, Sean Magnet, and Derek Southard that are with us this evening, that will be sworn in tonight at the township meeting. I'm also going to invite, I think all of them have their masks here with them tonight, so I'm going to invite them to come up if they will and stand behind them, and we'll actually have them pin their badges on after, after we administer the oath. I don't remember which mask was put to each employee. Colleagues, I'd ask that you raise your right hand and answer I do to the following questions. I will recognize at all times that I am a public servant, and that ultimately I am responsible for the safety and well-being of myself, my colleagues, and all citizens. I will accept responsibility for my actions by exhibiting honesty and integrity through ethical behaviors. I will promote diversity within our organization and ensure fair and open access to all who call for service. I will at all times observe the highest principles of fairness and strive to meet those values which reflect honor upon the township, the EMS, and myself. I will continually seek to maintain and improve my professional knowledge, skills, and competence. Now, gentlemen, do you swear to follow and uphold all the department's SOPs, the county's medical treatment protocols, state and federal statutes, as well as the state of Michigan and U.S. Constitution? Do you also affirm you will not permit or cause any employer or agent acting on your behalf to do anything which would constitute a violation of this oath? If you want to give, Kristen Werter, Assistant Chief, is going to give each employee's probationary, each probationary employee's, mother their badges, and lastly, they pin that on their left of the chest. If you draw any blood, we do know the number to 911 here.
Sir, if you want to come get a better picture and get hit.
That's going to be important.
By all means, yeah.
Township board members and citizens of Lennox Township, on behalf of the Richmond Lennox Ambulance Authority, it is my privilege to formally present to you these sworn professionals, who I now can attest are fully prepared to serve both you and our citizens. Gentlemen, thank you very much. The rest of the EMS report, I got out by email near the close of business today, and as much as your meeting hits right for first of the month. So if you have not had a chance to review it before the meeting tonight, I just ask that you take a look at your email. It should be in your inbox, and if you have any questions, certainly give me a call throughout the week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations.
One quick question here. Do you know what date the blood drive is on?
Yeah, it's March 11th. Monday, March 11th, we have the Richmond Lennox Ambulance Building on Thursday, March 11th. I'll be right back in there, bud.
Okay, see, thank you. DEW report.
Good evening. I'm just going to kind of touch on some highlights from the previous month. As you well know, we're in the middle of the LX1 rehab project. Contract is gearing up. To my knowledge, all the valves and the penetrures for that project have been ordered and contracted awaiting shipment. Snow and ice control for the month. You know, the weather's picked up the last month or so, so we've been keeping busy with that. As of today, we surpassed last year's snowfall as far as inches recorded. So, and as you can see this week, it's, every day, we got these little waves coming through, so we're trying to stay on top of that. We were able to finish some equipment repair. As noted in the previous month, we had a, our older lawnmower starting to use some oil. We were able to do an in-house repair to save some money. Hopefully, that'll help us get by for a few more years with that unit. State's doing sampling. That's ongoing through the state. We've completed this quarter's sampling and have received our results that look satisfactory. State reporting, our pump engine cross connection control report has already been completed and submitted, as, as I've been able to do in the previous years, is able to get that in early, but those reports are not due until March 31st. And lastly, oh, ice rig. As luck would have it this year, the weather's been working with us. We've been able to hit the ice rig up and run it. We had it good for about a week, and then we had that warm snap. Fortunately, it got cold real, real quick again, and was able to save, salvage what we got going there. So, as long as the weather continues, we'll have decent ice when it gets skating on. And lastly, some of you may remember last month, it was a little chilly in here. We had a failure of the unit that heats this room. Kind of find out that one of the compressors in that unit failed. Upon closer review, the failure shouldn't have happened. I called it a manufacturer defect. I contacted the manufacturer of the unit. They really didn't want to discuss it at first because of the age of the unit. The unit is five and a half years old, puts a four and a half years out of warranty. A lot of back and forth, a lot of phone calls, and emailing pictures back and forth. I was able to, at least get them to consider it. After closer review, they agreed that it was a manufacturing defect. Unfortunately, it saved us approximately $4,000 worth of repair by doing this. So persistence pays off, I guess. And lastly, miscellaneous, we've responded to nine different fire calls during a normal workday and two mystic replies. If anybody has any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you. No questions, thank you. Code enforcement report.
Dr. Michigan Lennox Control Commission inspections have made effective from February, so.
You have a question, you got a code enforcement? Sussing Department report. Lisa, you want to give your report?
I, I don't have it. I don't have anything yet. If you wanted to receive a file, just wait for my agenda.
Why don't you give it somewhere, you were put? Great. Thank you.
Good evening. Right now, basically what we're working on is just preparing the 2013 assessments. So we're working on late valises and ACFs for residential, commercial, industrial. We have a few FTT cases that have just been settled, Myers, I believe, Sumter Energy. Other than that, I just have two items on the agenda that I can speak to when I need them up.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay, thank you. Engineer's report. Mr. Safe?
Good evening.
Good evening. I emailed to the Sussing Department. Any questions? I'm going to ask for receiving files.
Any questions for Mr. Safe? No questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Library report.
Receiving file.
Thank you. Supervisor report. Want to start out and inform the community, a certificate of community excellence that we received January 31st, 2013, from Marquette County Executive, basically states that Combs County applauds the Township of Lennox for its innovation in delivering government services by distributing and employing agricultural works of development rights, committing a cooperative effort between local communities that allows landowners the ability to conserve their properties' farming. Lennox has also joined with the Charter Township of Richmond, that actually their general township, to provide EMS services to both communities. Us and a few other communities were at our awards ceremony the other day and received this, and actually got press in the paper regarding this too, so congratulations to everyone for this. Also want to inform township residents, the MTA, I think, was a great success. They had great classes this year. We are also to hope to be obtained soon. Jeanette, I don't know if you have the date, but a policy and procedures manual straight from the MTA that pretty much covers any policy and procedure, so anything that we're lacking that we have to refer to, we can go into this book and hopefully gain knowledge and material from for the future. And that's all I have at this time. Thank you. Treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
What? Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by trustee Boyd. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Orders and bills.
Is there any changes at all over here, Karen?
I was informed that $75 didn't come off of this, so I'm getting a total on that.
Are the, is the payment to the credit cards for the MTA on this bill?
Yes, that's one, one of the 75 that is coming off of it.
Number 44. Lennox Township. For a new total of $274,895 and one cent. Still have some misgivings on payments and charges at the MTA. Build my protest on that.
Make a motion to approve the orders and bills for $274,895 and one cent. Support. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Deputy clerk?
Turchi? No. Boyd? Atchaker? Aye. Keith? Aye. Tronley?
Aye. Trustees report. Trustee Turchi?
I just want to thank the residents for once again allowing us to go to the MTA conference. It was very good. Lot of discussion with different people from different areas, and out of the six time slots for classes, I think I probably attended nine classes, because I would go into one and realize it was not what I thought it was, or wouldn't benefit for it, so we'd go to another one. Picked up a few pointers, and I'll put together something and leave it, you know, here for people to look at and give it to board members. Thank you again.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd?
Yeah, I agree. The MTA conference, it was really fantastic. I took an eight-hour new official class and attended seven whole classes, so same thing. And again, I appreciate you guys allowing me to do that. Also, met with Samed and Cam and a couple other people, started the process for replacing the path outside, walking path, or doing repairs, one or the other, hopefully as replacing. We do have some material coming in, company that does a horse material that actually qualifies somehow towards the green building type thing, and very easy to get, hopefully grants for it because it qualifies with the green and equal friendly. So hopefully, we'll have something from them within the next week or so, and then we'll meet on that. And this month, we will start looking and putting together a parking unit. So if anybody's interested in that, I already have one person.
What was that?
Starting a parks committee, park and rec. committee. So if anybody's interested, let me know. That is all that I have.
Thank you. Superior's report.
I also want to thank everyone for allowing us to go to the MTA convention. I went to six out of six. I, like Turchi, got up and walked out of one and went into another one because it was not what I thought it was going to be. A lot of paperwork stuff. I went to election updates, and it was very informational. I also went to the library meeting this past month and swore in all the new members. Also, went to the meeting at the county for the school district coordination and agreed to continue running those school elections as we have in the past. That's all.
Thank you. Motion, uh, please.
Make a motion to receive and file a report. Support.
Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Unfinished business. Twenty-six mile road sanitary sewer extension and twenty-six mile road pump station, ownership transfer. Mr. Safe, you might want to join in.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Just wondering, we're going to act my life, is it?
Our engineer can answer that question, sir.
I'm sorry, I can deal with that.
No, sir, it has nothing to do with any kind of groundwater whatsoever, it has to do with the sewer system in all places, as far as all the sewer is conveyed downstream.
Last time you did it, I hit it up.
Well, well.
That was during construction, this has nothing to do with construction, everything is in place.
We're not going to turn up the nozzle on that pump station, are we?
Pump station, only pumps, sanitary sewer, no groundwater. As we brought to the board last month, the county is asking us to take ownership of the twenty-six mile road pump station as well as twenty-six mile road sanitary sewer and extension. It was asked that our attorney take a look at the language of the agreement and comment if he should enter into it or not.
Has everybody received a copy from Mr. Joppik, Mary Joppik?
I did speak with Mr. Joppik late last week, we went over the agreement, and my knowledge, everything is in order, so also get the appropriate paperwork for the property change.
Thank you. Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution to authorize the township supervisor to execute and deliver the agreement for the transfer of ownership of the twenty-six mile road sanitary sewer, the twenty-six mile road sanitary sewer extension and twenty-six mile road pump station.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. PM, if you want to stand right there, one second, please, and Jeanette? Deputy Superintendent, please. Compton County Sheriff's Department Substation Sidewalk. For our last conversation, and I believe this was tabled, PM, actually, you found the bid or the quote from before?
Yeah, last month when this ended up on the agenda, I didn't really know it was going to be on there, otherwise I would pull this paperwork, paperwork out earlier. Last April, we had some concrete work down at the emergency services center, and then I also had the same contractor do some hot rubber crack fill ceiling at the various locations. One of the things, since he was here, because it was talked about, I asked them to do a quote on that sidewalk for the sheriff's entrance to the existing sidewalk, and I was able to find that paperwork and pull it out today, and as you can see at the bottom, the new sidewalk specs, they were willing at that time to do the work for twenty-one hundred dollars. I'm sure the only thing that would change is if there was a cost of materials at this point. Obviously, right now, it's not the most favorable time to do that kind of work, but I'm sure if we talk to them, they would...
Give us a good idea on the cost?
Yeah, I mean, that's, these were all standard unit prices, when we did the project down the road, we had three or four bids, I believe, they came at the lowest, and they carried the unit cost right on through, so, I mean, we found out, he did the bid work, if you will, and that's how they arrived at this quote for the work that we can do.
Jeanette also spoke to the deputies, if you want to, just bring us up to speed on that real quick.
Aye. I spoke to two of the sheriffs, and they're thought of having the sidewalk, they really want the sidewalk there, they don't want to have to park down in the center and the north entrance, and their car would be left running, and then they'd have to go all the way to the down hall to that entrance where their office is. If there was an emergency and they had to leave quickly, they would have to run down the hallway and then out these double doors. The chances of them running into someone coming out of their offices, you know, great if that happens all day, so they really like the sidewalk there, it's accessible to their vehicle, and such a short distance, so that's their problem.
If I may add one thing, I did speak with one of the deputies recently, and we kind of got to talking about the sidewalk issue, he brought up kind of a good point that would help offset some of the costs for what they're doing out here, and they, he had recommended that we adopt a retail fraud ordinance, by doing that, with some of the retail fraud cases, they handle, instead of that money that they receive going to the state, it would come directly to us. That would be one avenue to help offset the cost of this as well.
And I believe what Myers and our community are very prominent now.
Yeah, and from what I'm understanding, kind of is it really? But he indicated that would be one way that, you know, things that they're out there doing would help offset the cost of this project, we would just have to adopt the ordinance.
Do you think it would be beneficial to look into using the pavement that we're talking about doing the path with? What we're doing, they're doing the path, do the sidewalk there. It's part of a green building, and it's forest pavement, and that gets, that area gets a little water anyway.
When I talked to the gentleman from that company, he said it is quite a good response. If, I mean, we can get grants for a walking path out of the building, we can get a grant for a side door for the sheriff's substation, but we could definitely increase on that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, mine.
Last month, this was brought up about getting a quote for meeting T4 payouts, and I'm still waiting on that quote on that also.
I think, Julie, it wasn't part of the issue, a little bit of all being nervous that there's people coming in that door, whether it's sheriffs or not sheriffs, and not knowing who they are, and wanting to play calls, and when we're using this door down here, at least they're coming into the building, people aren't going to see them, and it's employee entrance, I know that was one of the concerns. From that into the building.
Well, there is a camera on that, on that door down there, you know, just as this one, but you're right, there is no record of who's actually coming in and who's coming out.
Excuse me, there are a lot of those door keys out there, because every sheriff has one, because you never know who's going to be on vacation or off one day, that someone else has to substitute, so most of the sheriffs have a key to that door. Now that we have New Haven using the sheriff's department too, their officers on weekends, I'm not sure during the week, but I know on weekends, they come here and use the substation too, so we do have quite a few officers out there.
Which is, in my opinion, more of a reason to have the keypad camera come in this door because any other accountability, you know who's coming in.
But if you have, if you have this door, the north entrance, then you have to have two, one on the outside and one on the inside.
I understand that. I think it makes perfect sense to have them enter and exit right next to their office, quick in, quick out, no interference with anybody else.
I mean, if we can't trust our sheriffs.
Has nothing to do with trust, has to do with safety of the building.
Yes, and we still have a camera there.
I understand that, is anybody watching that camera twenty-four seven? That's, it's just, I'm just trying to make the point that we have to make sure that everybody in the building is safe, and it's more accountability, in my opinion, in this door, I'm not a hundred percent opposed to the sidewalk and that door, I just, we need to look at that.
Right.
And part of what we need to look at is the cost, because it's not just putting that pavement down and the sidewalk in, it's also maintaining it, replacing it, repairing it, you have to look at everything, and we already have a door with a keypad, with accessibility, it just makes, to me, it makes sense.
Now the keypads, but...
Well, how hard is it to put his white pad on that door down there?
It's not hard, I got a quote for that a year and a half ago, so I just need to update...
Extremely simple.
Need to update that quote, I would think that Cam, you should double check to make sure that, how good this quote is, and then, what was the, on the course, did you think it was not doable, or?
No, it, very doable, the problem is it's more expensive than pavement, and we can get grants for a walking path, I don't know whether we can get a grant for just a sidewalk to the substation. I think it would be, I mean, if we're going to do it, I think it would be worth looking into, because they're saying there's twenty years on this material out there, so if we're going to do that, it might be worth it, just for the fact that it lasts twenty years.
Okay, so would you be willing to look into the cost of that for next month? You look into the cost of this for next month, and I'll look into the cost of the keypad for next month?
We want to find out how many white cards it would be for how many offices.
It wouldn't be, who knows what cards?
Oh, it's numbers, oh, okay, okay.
Cam, when did you want to start on that path out there, when spring broke?
I would like to see us, as soon as the weather breaks and we're able to get out there and it's not work, I'd like to be ready for it, because the longer we wait, the more we're going to tie it up, busy with the contract, there's more chance of somebody getting hurt off of it, too.
Sure. Those, in saying that, my concern, those grants... And that's, we did talk about that fact, too, but if we can get it paid for a hundred percent or a lot of it, it might be, it's worth looking into anyways, I don't disagree with that.
I make a motion that we table the sheriff department's substation sidewalk until next month, waiting for other information on the sidewalk, the keypads, and forest pavement.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher, any other discussion? Is the information we're waiting on just on the first payment aspect of it? We got the quote on the, basic quote on the sidewalk, can you hear it, clerk?
Cam was going to double check, I'm not sure, because this is well, almost a year old.
Okay. I can be there, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals training sessions.
This was tabled last month, waiting for numbers from Pat Maher, after speaking with the assurance, and I have not heard back from Pat on that. So I make a motion to table this again until we get the information from them.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Boyd, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. New business. Two thousand thirteen poverty exemption guidelines and application. Script.
I believe everyone has a copy of the guidelines, application and resolution for the two thousand thirteen poverty exemption application. Basically, what it is, is the guidelines and the application are not much different from what they've been in the past, the only thing that's different is how we set up the income, which is on the third page. So basically, what it does is it gives the board review a little bit more leeway, it kind of broadens the income that a person could qualify under, so the first tier would be the federal poverty guideline tier, which is the zero, the one person in the household, zero to eleven, one seventy, they would get a total exemption from taxes. The next tier for one person in a household, for example, we would establish the ability to pay would be three and a half percent, and then we would do a calculation to see what they would be reduced to based on that range of income, and then the third tier would actually be figuring out if they could pay between five and ten percent of their income towards taxes, and then figuring out what the reduction would be based on that, and then if they were over the fourth tier, basically, there would be no relief. So for each, as you add a person in the household, obviously, the income guideline changes, but it's, it's based on the federal, federal poverty guidelines, but we, we can, we can go more broad than the federal poverty guidelines, but we can't go less than the federal poverty guidelines, so this kind of gives the board review some options as far as, like, if somebody's close to qualifying, but, you know, they don't fall under that first tier, they may fall under the second tier. But as far as the application process, it's pretty much the same as it's always been, we still would ask them for the same type of information, I think the application actually is pretty standard for most people in assessing that we've seen. So what we're looking for today is just a resolution from the board to accept the poverty exemption policy and guidelines.
Just, you have to remember, I'm new at this stuff, it's just a question, it's just popped in my head, ultimately, and this probably has nothing, really probably has nothing to do with this specifically, but ultimately, who decides whether these people get this?
The board review.
Which is by residents?
There are three residents that are appointed by the township board.
Okay. Ultimately, they're the ones that's...
Correct, and they always have another option, if the board review, for instance, denies them based on a poverty exemption as well, they still have the right to appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, so they still have another tier they can go to if they feel that they really qualify, and the board review didn't, you know, grant them any relief, they can still go to the tribunal.
These are correct, but this gives them more criteria, makes it more definitive for them to answer if that person qualifies or not, correct?
Yes, I think this kind of gives them more of a, basically, in the guidelines, there's certain things, we have to have an acid test that they have to look at, you know, so all of these things, they have to be looked at, and if they don't pass one part of the test, usually they don't qualify. The board does have an out kind of with that, to say that if there's extenuating circumstances, they could qualify for one year for a poverty exemption, say somebody just lost their job and then they had to have, you know, catastrophic surgery, or something happened that was catastrophic to their family, they could be granted outside of the guidelines, but the board review has to be very specific in how they convey that to the homeowner in their notes, so this has to go.
Actually, I think this was a class that the gentleman gave, that I went to over to college, correct?
Yes. Yeah, these, actually, these are kind of moderately up to Chesterfield Township's guidelines.
Yeah, that gentleman did, good gentleman.
And with that said, with this resolution, I would not have to come before you every year to do this, basically, inside the guidelines, it basically says, we're going to use the federal poverty guidelines.
Sort of guidelines.
Right, and until it changes, I wouldn't have to come before the board.
Before, every year we have parameters.
Right.
And now, usually, we do guidelines, but it leaves from here on out.
Yeah, and it states in the guidelines that with the federal poverty standards change, then ours will change with those.
So would you come before the board then?
No, because every year they change, so until something changes in the guidelines, then we would ask for some other piece of, you know, in the application process, or we just change how we're, you know, maybe we won't do that tiered process anymore, then we would come before the board and adopt a new guide, set of guidelines.
Questions?
I make a motion that we approve the federal poverty guidelines for two thousand thirteen. I make a motion that we approve the federal property guidelines for 2013.
Well, I guess what we're looking for is just to approve the poverty exemption guidelines. If you say the 2013 federal poverty guideline, then we have to come every year. So if you just say to approve the guidelines and the, I guess we're looking for a resolution is what the...
I rescind that motion. Make a motion that we approve the federal property guidelines.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Otter. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Anything else?
I have a second one. We have a question. The second thing I hear is a resolution to allow residents to write an appeal for the March Board Review. It's just basically housekeeping to just allow residents to appeal by mail. The law allows for non-residents to appeal by mail, but it doesn't specifically state residents. So they asked us to do a resolution. You may have done one years ago, but I just would like this one to be on the record. We have to come back again next year.
Okay. Just, again, because I'm new at this stuff.
Sure.
What is this, what is the specific reason why it's local, you know, why it can't be local? I understand on-state ones, but if they're local, I guess it makes sense because a lot of people are informed that this happened here.
Yeah, some people, right, some people, like during the hours that we pull the board reviews, sometimes they work, they can't make it into an in-person hearing.
Physical impairment.
Right. So we, you know, we actually welcome the written appeals, but it just makes, gives them a few more options as far as appealing.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to allow residents to write an appeal for March Board Review.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Otter. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Multi-year budget plan update. Everybody received a copy of a letter from Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey couldn't be here tonight. Put this together for us. Basically, this is for a five-year outlook budget to monitor our budgets.
For Paul's letter, he, we have one that was done in 2010, which is still going through 2015. Also, I spoke to Paul about this and he said, stated that he understands this is a large amount of money. And with the economy still not completely turned around, it's kind of hard to say, well, we're gonna be doing it in three years, four years, for building stock or whatever at this point. My feeling is I'd like to wait at least another year, maybe look at this again next year. That'll be 2014 and there would still be one more year left on the one we already have.
I agree, Jody. Not enough has changed yet. The economy is slow, slow coming down, we hope.
And just for those in the audience, this is run roughly, it's somewhere between 45 and 4500 and $165,000 to do this.
And over, I guess, over a five-year period, if you break it down for the amount of money that we have to manage, I think it's, it's, it's money well spent to keep an eye on everything that we have. I don't mind waiting a year. That's cool, right? I definitely don't want to wait anything, time past that. I do want to make sure we stay on top of this. There are some factors that might come into play. If, one thing I would like to bring up, and I know everybody's read the, I hope everybody's read the newspaper article of the Times Herald, the neighboring county hospital opening up their landfills and Canadian trash, which could impact us. So I think even more so, we have to look at projected revenues to make sure that we're safe. So I don't, I don't want to put this on the backboard too long.
You said that the amount of money is to cover over a five-year span. It hasn't been five years yet. It's bare, it's not even in three. So to spend that much money again after two years is not, there's no reason for it, so.
Other questions? Make a motion to table the property, or I'm sorry, the multi-year budget plan update until next year.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Thank you. Property maintenance board of appeals appointments. Mr. Hames?
As of right now, our Board of Appeals is run out. So I had to set up a whole new board. And these are all state-qualified people that are all at their certification.
State-qualified?
All the ones that are on, I have for the new board is all building officials, fire chief, electrical, and mechanical. So we're covering all bases.
I understand, but there's no state qualification, right?
No, the state requires us to have a Board of Appeals.
I understand it.
Yeah.
I understand it.
But you're supposed to have people who are knowledgeable in the code. So I went and got all, covered all bases for us.
I just wanted to clarify the difference between state-qualified individuals or just individuals.
Well, no, they're all registered with the state. Just the same way, they're all building officials that are registered with the state, they're certified. You understand me?
You're telling me, are these three individuals are all state-registered building officials?
Yeah, they're all registered with the state, not all.
I got a mixed up. We're doing the other one first, the property maintenance code one.
Right now, we're on the Building Board of Appeals.
No, we have, the property maintenance code, that's the one that has three.
Yeah, that's what me and Ron was working on, the property maintenance code.
Yeah, but there's two tonight, though. We've got the property maintenance code. You have Kenneth Thompson, Michael Tostel, and Ivor J. Hanson. And then you have the alternate.
Right, they're all, they're all from the township.
Okay, that's the one. But then you were mentioning the...
The Building Board of Appeals is required by the state.
Right, that's the next agenda item, so.
Do the property maintenance one first.
Describe your other list.
I got a phone right there.
Order the law for maintenance code right now.
Chris isn't coming over the, wait, you're good. Oh, sorry.
Any questions regarding the property maintenance code Board of Appeals? Make a motion to approve the property maintenance code Board of Appeals appointments.
Support.
Do you want to list their names due from the record? Names are Kenneth B. Thompson, Michael Tostel, Ivor J. Hanson, and the alternate, Darryl Lotfelter. Thank you. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussion or questions? Does sue recommend, right, sir?
Aye.
Sue, you recommend, right?
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Building Board of Appeals appointments. This is the one you were talking about?
Yeah, this is the one I'm talking about, Ron.
I make a motion that we make the appointments to the Construction Board of Appeals as presented to us by Building Inspector. Members are Greg Nico, Michael Jakes, Mary Van Herren, Robert Osterman, William Klassen.
Klassen.
Klassen. And the alternate is Brian Bailey.
Support. Motion by Trustee Church, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
I'd just like to make one little comment. The fellows that are on this board would help out if cases of disaster. So under the insurance, when I turn that insurance in for our credit, they were part of those that would not volunteer, but would come in and help us if, say, there's a tornado and we needed five inspectors. They all, you know, volunteered to help me out. Of course, they want to be paid.
Thank you, sir.
Call the next one that sits, too. They wait up there, Bob. Bob, you can stay up there. The next one's yours.
Township Office North Entrance Directional Sign Request.
Nancy was asking for a sign out by the side mark, that's a directional sign to most, to give them to the... Actually, the front of the building is in the back. And most people that come here think this is the front. So what they want to do is put a sign by the door directing them to the back of the building. Because we, a lot of people come to that door and they get very upset when they, they get out there and then they see employees on. Because you can't see it from the parking lot.
Now, if somebody comes in for the building department, they would come to the front counter and then you would come and meet them?
We want, yeah, we want everybody to come to the front, so it's pretty much secure, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea because I know myself, when I come in that door, even with my key or not, now, there's, if nobody's at that counter, I'll yell to Nancy, it's me. So she knows, she doesn't have to get up and come see. But yeah, for safety reasons, I believe that door should be locked. And we should have some kind of direction to send people this way. It's the best way to keep anybody out of the working area.
Yeah, because what it is, is once they get through into the hallway, then you don't know where they're at. A couple times, they went into our private bathroom. Well, you know, say a woman goes into hers, who knows who's in that shower? You know, what I mean is hiding, you know?
Well, it's for safety reasons, you know, because if anybody walks in and is letting that door, they could get to anybody in there, so. And that's why we hid such a nice counter, so that we have some better security. So do we need to get, putting up a directional sign, do we have to follow any ordinances or guidelines for that? Or can we just have a small one put up?
Well, Ron, isn't Shannon a sign maker?
Yeah, but here, once again, there's not enough information before it. There's no size, there's no price, there's, there's nothing at this time.
What would be something I'd be interested?
I understand the security needs, but let's be realistic here. We have a counter in front that anybody can jump over. Typically, the door is never locked, push it wide open and lock in. The back, they have to be led into the main corridor to go to the other offices for the building department anyhow. And if they do come in, at the front counter, if there's no one there, they just go to the counter. So I mean, the security is always going to be an issue there, no matter how you slice it.
But what's happening is everybody's coming in that door. Ninety percent of the people are. And they're not here for the building department. They may be to talk to the clerk or talk to the assessor or just get a burden permit or a basic question. Then what happens is that person has to be walked through the entire office to the front. Then they have to be walked back out. So this way, if that door is locked and everybody comes in here, somebody sees who is entering this building. So it's best that that door is locked.
Agreed with that?
Yeah, I talked to Bobby Nancy today and Nancy said that one of our biggest concerns is there are times when both of those offices are empty. There's nobody in there. They're at the front counter with a resident, conducting business or whatever, and there's nobody back there. And if you get a senior that comes in, coming to senior center, and then here for the first time, a user on the door, they don't know what they're doing. So if that sign is there and it's directing around the front of the building, it just saves a lot of steps for some people. So I think it's as much of a convenience for the residents as it is a safety issue.
I think actually what we need to do, what I want to do, what I'd like to do, make a motion to table this until, are you willing to get a price?
Well, we can, we can look into what, for the sign you mean?
Yeah, design something and get a price for next month.
Sure.
We'll do that. So I make a motion to table this until Bob comes up with a price and some kind of sign design.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Otter. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Excuse me, a possibility would be just somebody that has some art experience or an art student or something, just make up a sign. I mean, it's not, it doesn't have to be a sign, you know, made out of wood or something.
Paint it white with those signs?
Yeah, you know, something as simple as that. So if you're comfortable with something, you know, two-by-fours now.
That's what I, I wasn't figuring anything extravagant.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Can I say something? We got one of the prettiest buildings going. Let's not stick some two-by-fours in the guy.
Well, I don't mean just a crappy one, but just, we don't have to go out and spend $300 on a specially made sign, is what it is. That's all.
It would really look nice. Let's stay there.
I support that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Township Office Portraits' Slack Request.
On this one, it's, it's actually, it would be an easy fix, but it needs to be, the door would need to be reprogrammed by A D T. So I will get a quote from them to do that. At the same time, I'm asking about the key pads. So when this was brought up, it was like, there wasn't time to get a quote from them, but that's what it has to be done. It's a program issue. So I make a motion to table the North Entrance Slack Request, waiting for a price from A D T.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Otter. Any other discussion? The only thing I have to say is, if that's going to be the case, that lock, Carol, we might as well move out to the front desk, our people back and forth. So it doesn't leave the receptionist, it'll leave me at her post. People have to be escorted back to the building department. She'll be sitting back there.
Actually, when I talked to Nancy, she said all of this stuff is up in the front. I believe most of the paperwork from the building department is not up there. It's all up there anyways. That's all, even if they come in that door, ninety-nine percent of the time, she's bringing them off onto a big work anyways.
Right.
Until the time that the building department really starts moving again, we're building.
Well, then we could open it back up.
Then we can look at it at that point, but...
I don't see it right away in the foreseeable future.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Thank you. Township Office Portable Heater Purchase Request.
We tabled that at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Correct. Policy Nana Workshop.
Did we do this on a Monday last time? Isn't that, that's usually the best?
No, we did it on a Wednesday. Wednesday's best. Because I know I can get here by six.
Can we look at both? Can we look at both the thirteenth and maybe the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh?
I can do the twenty-seventh. Everybody getting it, Ron, the twenty-seventh?
Somebody's so far. No, but I would hope that we don't make any other appointments at that point. So to get this done, we need a break because we have other appointments that night. So we need to get this finished off. So if we're going to do it, let's do it on a night when we make sure we've got nothing else going on.
Should we start earlier?
Well, I don't think we can.
I mean, you guys can start if you want, I can, you know, I can get here at six thirty.
How long are we setting these meetings for then? If we're going to, we're going to not have a definite timeline when another time that we're going to have these, how many hours are these meetings going to be for at night?
Well, let's go from six to nine on the twenty-seventh.
Six to nine it is.
Make a motion that we set the policy manual meeting for workshop meeting for February twenty-seventh from six to nine.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Boyd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Public comments? Any public comments at this time?
I do have a question, it's not really public comments, but TJ has submitted the request with sand and gravel mining cooperation. Usually, they go before the planning commission first. So I guess we put it on the next planning commission meeting because we canceled the maintenance, so that's ahead of February. And then the mining permit should be put on possibly in March.
Mr. Johnson, did you just postpone the CDU also?
No, I did not.
Okay. I'm sorry, that is not the agenda. We should order a full session issue before it's grabbed. Ron, are we supposed to do something? I've got a thing on this project, can I ask you a question?
You know, we can, we can make a motion to add to it, Jen, if she wants to tackle it tonight. Lisa leave? You'll be in longer.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-five.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Church, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. I'm going to adjourn.